Great, welcome everyone. It's Monday, August 26, 2024. It's time for our regularly scheduled city council meeting. Nice clerk certified meeting notice.
This meeting has been noticed in accordance with Idaho Code 74-204.
Call roll please.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Here.
Councilmember Jorgensen.
Here.
Councilmember Rasmus.
Here. Thank you. If you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, that shall be just as strong.
Item D is changes to the agenda. Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I think we have a couple of updates to the minutes from our August 12th meeting. So wasn't sure how to proceed. Do I just amend or?
Let me deal with the motion. I have a motion. If I don't get a second, the motion will die and then I'll turn it.
Okay, okay.
Do I have a second? Don't have a second, motion dies.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, within the consent agenda, the minutes had a couple of necessary updates. And I don't know if I need to specify those, but it was the minute showed Councilmember Jacobs is absent last meeting. He was here. And then one of the findings in, let's see, application.
Number five.
Thank you. Yeah, it was, I can't remember the application number, but it was finding number five. So that should read Councilmember Page moved that finding five is compliant and Councilmember Jacobs seconded. And then the votes were all correct.
Okay. So if you want to make a motion to accrue with those corrections?
Okay, so Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda with the amended minutes as submitted today.
My motion is second. Any discussion on the motion? Home favorite, say aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose? No. Motion carries. Move down to special business. Have a couple of proclamations to read. We've got our proclamation family here with us, so welcome everyone. It's a pleasure to have you here at our meeting tonight. The first proclamation is in regard to prostate cancer. Whereas prostate cancer is the most frequently diagnosed cancer in men and the second leading cause of cancer deaths in men. One in eight men has a lifetime probability of developing prostate cancer. And whereas it is estimated that this year, 1,660 men in Idaho will be diagnosed with prostate cancer and 210 Idaho men will die from this disease. Whereas prostate cancer death rates decline, declined from its peak in 1993 to its low in 2017 due to early detection through PSA testing and advances in treatment. And whereas the five-year survival rate approaches 100% when prostate cancer is diagnosed early, but drops to 34% when it spreads to other parts of the body. Whereas the risk factors for prostate cancer are increasing. African ancestry, a family history of the disease and certain inherited genetic conditions. And whereas the American Cancer Society recommends that men have a conversation with their healthcare provider and make an informed decision about whether to be tested for prostate cancer. Now therefore, I, John G. Evans, Mayor of City of Garden City, do hereby proclaim month of September 2024 to be Prostate Cancer Awareness Month in Garden City, Idaho. And I encourage all Garden City citizens to join communities across our nation to increase awareness about the importance for men to make an informed decision with their healthcare provider about early testing and detection for prostate cancer dated this 26th day of August 2024. With John Evans, Mayor. You like a picture? Okay.
You're welcome.
Okay. Also, we have a little proclamation. The guys have started, starting off hard work. Thank you. Just may I? Oh, good. Lock it. September 15th. In the Sheriff's Park. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, folks.
Been seeing you for a while. I see you around the place all the time.
All right, thank you, sir. Take care. Have a great week.
Our next proclamation is Falls Prevention Awareness Month. Whereas the state of Idaho is one of the fastest growing states in the nation and it has experienced a significant increase in the percentage of older adults. Falls are the most common cause of accidental injury and death of Idahoans age 65 and over. And whereas 33.6% of Idahoans age 65 and older fall each year, which is higher than the national average. One in five falls results in serious physical harm, such as broken bones. And falls are the number one cause of traumatic brain injury across all age groups. And whereas Idaho, Idahoans incur a total of $164 million in costs related to falls each year with the average medical cost of a fall in Idaho being $38,373 across all age groups. Medicare incurs $111 million, State Medicaid $27 million, and private or out-of-pocket $26 million for fall-related treatment yearly. This cost is expected to reach $101 billion nationally by 2030. And whereas the impact of falls on local infrastructure, including emergency medical services, critical access hospitals and trauma centers and long-term services and support is significant. And whereas Garden City recognizes the importance of the health, safety, security and independence of our residents. With modest interventions, most falls are avoidable based on awareness and simple strategies that significantly reduce the risk of these debilitating and often fatal events. Falls often lead to additional physio-social issues, including depression, social isolation, decreased mobility, loss of independence. And now therefore, I, John G. Evans, Mayor of Garden City, Idaho, do hereby proclaim the month of September 24, 2024 to be Falls Prevention Awareness Month. We urge every resident to acknowledge the physical, emotional, social and financial costs for all of us when our residents fall and to learn simple strategies to identify risks and reduce falls in our city. Needed this 26th day of August 2024.
Picture time? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Have a good evening.
The next item on our agenda is a presentation by Our Path Home. Casey, guys, come on up. You're gonna let him up there by himself? Okay.
Yeah, Sadie is here to supervise me and then help answer questions. Nice to meet you all. My name is Casey Mattoon. I work at the city of Boise along with Sadie Jones, who works with me as my second colleague, and our role is managing Our Path Home. Our Path Home is the federally designated continuum of care that's charged with managing an effective homelessness response system across Ada County, which includes collaborating with the Ada County government as well as all six municipalities within our region. It's our first time, I believe, being here at Garden City and we are super excited to be talking with you tonight.
Tell them where you live, Casey.
Yes, so Sadie and I, I think, are probably one of the rarer teams that you might find where we are both deep Treasure Valley roots from start to today. So I was born and raised in Eagle, went to school at Bishop Kelly in Boise, went to college at College of Idaho, worked at the city of Boise and live in Garden City off of 38th Street in a house that my husband and I were able to purchase with financing from Idaho Housing and Finance Association that was developed by Boise Neighbor Works as an affordable housing option for us. And then Sadie was born and raised between Middleton and Caldwell, currently lives in the city of Boise and works at the city of Boise with me. So we are a rare team that were born and raised in the Treasure Valley. And I think that's part of why we are both called to do work on making our community better, including make sure the place that we've called home for so many years can continue to be home and provide affordable homes for folks who need them. So today, what I'll be doing is I'm just gonna give you an overview and maybe by context, Our Path Home again is charged with collaborating with government, local governments across Ada County and we have not done a great job of being in contact with cities outside of the city of Boise. So we made an intentional effort this year to have conversations with all municipalities. We had the pleasure of meeting with Mayor Evans one-on-one to give a little overview and then through that suggested this might be a next good step to bring Ada County, or the Garden City Council along with us in understanding what the homelessness response system is and what we're seeing today on the ground. We're also doing the same work with Ada County and the Commissioners, the city of Kuna and the city of Eagle and trying to make those other contacts with the city of Meridian and the city of Starr. So Our Path Home, I want to start, and we always start by talking about continuum of care. So as I said, we're the federally designated continuum of care, which means that we're charged with coordinating a regional system response for housing and services. There are two continuum of care in the state of Idaho. One covers Boise City, Ada County. Its governing body is known as Our Path Home and the lead agency for Our Path Home is the city of Boise. Outside of that, as you can see in the map, all other regions in the state are balanced, are taken care of and it's called the Balance of State. So there are six separate regions throughout the rest of the state. Their governing body is called the Idaho House Idaho Collaborative and the lead agency is Idaho Housing and Finance Association. So two continuum of care that are charged with substantially the same role over different geographies and we regularly collaborate. So for Ada County, then, Our Path Home really has a governance structure that focuses on making sure that we engage community members in solutions, connect people to resources quickly, house people safely and permanently, and then fund solutions that make sure we maximize every dollar for impact. We provide independent governance to the partnership through an executive committee, engage and convene partners on issues specific to system improvement. We fundraise for strategic initiatives and implement funding for programs. We monitor and report not only to local officials, but also to the federal government, including housing and urban development. We provide system strategic planning support to set specific targets for homelessness system response. And again, we cover the entire geography of Ada County. We do this as a team of two and a half people, so myself and Sadie. And the Our Path Home manager, Sadie is the Our Path Home coordinator. And then Jasmine at the city of Boise serves as Our Path Home secretary, making sure that we meet compliance with public records requests, requirements to publicly post information, including meeting minutes and agendas. I'm not gonna spend a lot of time here, but we have a 16-member voting body that's comprised of representatives from cross-agency organizations, including health systems, carceral systems, service providers and local government and a handful of advisors that advise them on strategic direction. And then we have over 40 partners that work with us as part of this collaboration. Our entire partnership is working towards the goal of making sure that homelessness is increasingly rare. Means it happens to less people brief, that we're able to resolve somebody's episode of homelessness as quickly as possible and a singular experience, which means they make sure anyone who is housed doesn't return to homelessness and provide them the support they need to stay stably housed. Our general kind of goal to get there then is to build an equitable partnership with bold decision-making that aims for ambitious outcomes. We have three primary outcome goals that we're working on right now. Decrease the time people are spending experiencing homelessness, increase exits to permanent housing situations and prevent returns to homelessness. And then we have a number of other partnership priorities that we're working on at the direction of our executive committee. The meat of our work is really in our response system and we describe this in two ways. First, the crisis response system is really our ability to meet anyone that's experiencing a housing or homelessness crisis with the services that they need directly. Our crisis response system, we often call Connect and it has several different components. We have prevention, which really looks at how do we prevent housing loss? And how do we prevent people that are in publicly funded institutions from being exited from those institutions to an experience of homelessness as opposed to housing? We have our emergency shelter partners. We have five different emergency shelter partners across Ada County that provide very specific shelter services based on their program guidelines and missions. And then we have a street outreach team that's comprised of five full-time staff that work to connect with people that are experiencing literal homelessness, primarily folks that are unsheltered and have a significant and persistent mental illness or substance use disorder. So that team's role really is roaming the entire geography of Ada County and making connections with individuals that are disconnected from services to build back bridges of trust so that they can access services. All of those teams work together to make sure that anybody that they encounter that's experiencing literal homelessness in Ada County comes through a single door that's called coordinated entry. In coordinated entry, the role of Our Path Home is to, every individual experiencing literal homelessness in Ada County is assessed in the same way. Their assessment, we call the housing assessment, looks at several vulnerabilities, including length of time of homelessness, disabling conditions and other factors that make them increasingly vulnerable to negative outcomes. And then based on the score that they received within that assessment, they're prioritized for supportive housing services. That's in alignment with HUD's strategy, which says that continuum of care should focus on providing services to folks with the highest level of need first. Because if we don't solve that through the homelessness response system, it won't get solved. Because often these are folks who have been failed out of or not had success at other publicly funded institutions and homelessness system response is really the last door that's open for them. A couple of things that I want to note, when people are enrolled in coordinated entry, they often wait for a very long time for housing and a super majority of folks are never referred to supportive housing because we simply don't have enough service to provide to all those folks. As an example of this, in coordinated entry, as of July 2024, we have 2,191 households who completed housing assessments and actively are waiting for housing. And that includes 75% of those households being adult-only households and 25% are households with children, making up 551 households with children that are experiencing literal homelessness. And in those households, 692 individuals are children under the age of 17. So the crisis response system focuses on how, among so much demand, do you prioritize folks to supportive housing and then support them to stay housed? Couple other things I would note, across this entire crisis response system, we're seeing increased demand for services over the last several years. This is illustrated in July of this year, we had 3,397 unique individuals accessing homelessness crisis response services just in the month of July. And that is a number that we used to see tons of times over an entire quarter. So in the context of bad news, we like to provide good news because homelessness can seem really scary, but part of what we're here to do is to tell you that Our Path Home and our partners are subject matter experts that know which evidence-based solutions truly end people's homelessness at a benefit for that individual in the community. Last year, just in these 12 months that we polled, our coordinated entry team was able to have 224 households exits to a permanent housing situation between all of our partners that are listed here. So we know that the system is effective and it's truly about making sure we have the resources to match folks with in crisis. So as I said, the households that end up getting referred, sometimes it can take four families on average a year. For adult-only households, sometimes it can take up to three or four years on average of waiting and an experience of homelessness to be matched with the evidence-based intervention you need to resolve your episode of homelessness. Once they're matched with a referral into a program, we have two primary housing programs, rapid rehousing and permanent supportive housing. Rapid rehousing is for households that we believe have the ability with time and support to be self-sustained. So they have time-limited rental assistance and time-limited case management where the goal is graduating those households after, at maximum, 24 months of support to sustain a housing unit completely independently. Permanent supportive housing, we kind of talk about as like insulin to diabetes. For people experiencing long-time homelessness and people entering into permanent supportive housing, they have to have been experiencing close to chronic homelessness as is defined by Housing and Urban Development, which is long-time homelessness, and have at least one disabling condition. But many folks who are referred through coordinated entry to permanent supportive housing have years and years and years of experience of homelessness and oftentimes several co-occurring disabling conditions. Again, and in positive news here, I want to start by saying our housing response system in June of 2024 was supporting 434 households, 351 of which were adult-only households and 97 were families with children. So that means our system has almost 500 program spaces of capacity to rapidly rehouse and permanently house folks. And we know that that intervention is incredibly effective. Two examples, first at the bottom. Those rapid rehousing and permanent supportive housing programs, like I said, we report to the federal government annually. Those programs, after households are housed with them, and we measure their progress over 24 months to see if they're still stably housed. And in almost 93% of circumstances, that household is retaining its housing after two years of support within the program or graduating from the program. The next thing I want to point to is we have another housing strategy that's called Single Site Permanent Supportive Housing Development. Are any of you familiar with New Path Community Housing? So maybe just going back up to this model, these supportive housing programs can be delivered across a variety of housing types. So they can be single site, which means that a super majority or the entire building is dedicated to permanent supportive housing programs. Scattered site means that our case managers are working with a household that's experiencing literal homelessness and competing for units on the open market against your teachers, against your police officers, against your college students, against your service industry folks. It's incredibly difficult and I'm sure as you can imagine or have experienced within your family and friend networks, increasingly difficult over the last four years in Ada County. And the last is integrated. And this is where a developer takes some portion of the building and dedicates a certain percentage of units that's less than the super majority or even half to supportive housing programs. So New Path is an example of a permanent supportive housing building that's right in downtown Boise that opened in 2018. It has 40 units of permanent supportive housing where folks are referred through coordinated entry and then provided with rental assistance and supported by a six-person onsite staff team from Terry Riley Health Services that deliver assertive community treatment model for support services. As part of that project, we evaluated each year with the help of Idaho Policy Institute at Boise State University. And part of what they do is measure the project's outcomes. The project was set up to serve individuals who had the highest level of interaction with our medical systems, our justice systems and other systems that have a high cost, not only for those individuals, but for the community. So the evaluation every year, what it does is it takes individuals who are housed as part of the project and it grabs their real data utilizing those emergency services 12 months prior to entry into the project and then checks their data for utilization of those same services after being admitted to the project. In the first five years of the project, we've seen a reduction, and this slide is wrong, so you're gonna have to forgive me, but we've seen a reduction of 5,569 days of utilization of emergency services and over $8.8 million in cost avoidance across publicly funded systems in Ada County. That's an average of $1.7 million in reduced costs every single year. So we like to show those things because it helps understand there's a system design that's evidence-based that produces results and Our Path Home and our partners are operating it even in the face of increasing demand with incredible precision that's producing really good outcomes for our community. Beyond that, we also do some work, which is we engage the community, so we have a communications arm. We require training for our partners, so we keep them up to date on mainstream resources and provide quarterly training that are mandated by HUD. We have lived experience in advocacy work where we are increasingly trying to center our solutions and decision-making with people with lived experience of homelessness as opposed to just subject matter experts. No one is more of an expert at navigating a system than somebody who's literally navigated a system. And then data and performance, where we make data available upon request and in publicly available dashboards. And then we work to leverage funding. So we have several major system funders that you can see there. We work with our funded partners to identify priorities. We prioritize based on those for funded activities that we need to increase based on demand that we're seeing with our community or outcomes we need to improve. And then we have strategic initiatives is where the executive committee comes together and says, this is so important, we are all gonna wrap hands and move forward this initiative. And I'll talk a little bit about those. A couple of notes I just want to make, part of having a COC in your area means that you're able to leverage through that organization federal government funding. So literally today, I'm working on a $600,000 application to bring money into our community to rehouse youth between the ages of 18 and 24 that are experiencing homelessness, the majority of which are experiencing homelessness based on aging out of foster systems, coming out of other institutional settings or having some type of family conflict where they're no longer invited to be in the home with their family, often rooted sometimes in gender identity or sexual identity. We're also working on $1.9 million funding that primarily comes from HUD to fund those two supportive housing programs we talked about. And in addition to that, we just found out this week, an application to bring $7.3 million in from the United States Department of Treasury. From the city of Boise got recommended to move to the next step. And so what that will help us do is scale the work that we're doing at New Path at 193 new units in Ada County. And we are currently working on $5 million to bring in to develop new permanent supportive housing like New Path. So the COC is eligible for and we actively apply for opportunities to bring more of these evidence-based solutions to respond to the increased demand. I want to end, again, a little positive, talking about our strategic initiatives. So in 2021, the Our Path Home partnership launched the campaign to end family homelessness. It was much delayed because of COVID. As you can imagine, there was a lot of adjustment that had to happen in homelessness response services. But the goal of the campaign is to end family homelessness by 2026. And what that means for our partnership is that the number of families that are experiencing homelessness in any month is the same number of families that our system has the capacity to rehouse in that same time period. And what this does is it helps ensure that as families enter, we're able to quickly exit them to a point where no family is experiencing homelessness for more than 60 days. So we're making progress towards that goal through partners. We've invested over $11 million in solutions that we're spending through 2026. As part of that, we've launched a dedicated units program, which is focused on getting those integrated units at properties across the, across Ada County to match with. As part of that, we've launched a dedicated units program, which is focused on getting those integrated units at properties across the, yeah, across Ada County to match with folks that are already have rental assistance and support services, but just need to find that affordable unit that they can get into. Because often these folks have very high barriers to get housed. And then, um, we just passed our threshold of over one thousand families served with targeted housing support specifically. So we've served a lot more families in that during this time, but for our housing programs, which are eviction, rapid rehousing, rapid resolution and permanent supportive housing, we, we pass a thousand, which is huge. And then our final uh, per uh, initiative is our scaling permanent supportive housing initiative. This um, started with a needs assessment for permanent supportive housing that we conducted with the Corporation for Supportive Housing in two thousand and twenty-two. Uh, that set a goal to develop two hundred and fifty new units of permanent supportive housing across up to five projects over the next five years. Today, we are um, sixty-six percent of the way there. Oh, no, not sixty-six, that's the other one. Um, we're super far uh, there. We have a hundred and ninety-three units out of two hundred and fifty in progress and we can talk to you more about these projects, but the first one, New Path, opened in two thousand and eighteen. The second, Valor Point, opened in two thousand and twenty-two. Those a hundred and ninety-three units are coming from the next three projects, which is the Sherwood, a forty-eight unit apartment complex by Boise State University that the city just purchased from the city, uh, from Boise State University as part of that area redevelopment. We have New Path two point oh, which will be right next to New Path in downtown Boise, adding ninety-five new units of permanent supportive housing. And then the Fulton, which is gonna be on an old fire station lot that's vacated, where we're gonna build fifty units of permanent supportive housing. And that project is intended specifically to target older adults that have medical fragilities, which we're seeing a lot more of. So it was good to hear the proclamation earlier about falling. And beyond that, we're seeing a lot of folks age into homelessness in Ada County because their social security benefit or fixed income no longer affords them the rent that they've been paying. And they end up on our doorstep trying to find new housing options and they don't quite exist. And then as part of that work, for permanent supportive housing, you gotta like build the thing, which requires a bunch of capital. You've got to attach rental assistance for which we're really thankful. We're working with the Boise City Ada County Housing Authorities to attach rental assistance so that we can make sure that that building can operate and rents can be paid. And then the last leg of that is providing those support services through our Terry Riley Health Services team that are key to making sure that we're meeting those really high community cost avoidance outcomes. Uh, to continue working on that, we set up with Idaho Community Foundation, a supportive housing investment fund with the goal of seeding that fund for fifteen million dollars. That will do a couple of things. One, it'll move us away from our bake sale method. So right now, when it comes to New Path's bill every single year, we essentially hold a bake sale with leadership and ask who wants to chip in. Um, as you can imagine, it's like an uncomfortable bake sale, but we have really committed partners at the city of Boise, St. Alphonsus and St. Luke's, who've stepped up time and time again to make sure that New Path services continue. To move away from that, we set up this flexible funding pool to achieve fifteen million dollars so we can pay for services from there. And it's with a community foundation because they can leverage those dollars to return even more through investment strategies. And then the final thing I'll say is this is also kind of a bridge to Medicaid. Nationwide supportive housing services, including pre-tenancy and tenancy supports are being incorporated by CMS into Medicaid services across many states, including our neighbors in North Dakota and Montana. So while we're working towards increasing our ability to bill for those services to Medicaid, this fund should be part of um, kind of a bridge to getting there. Today, the city of Boise made a seven point five million dollar seed investment and is working to match that dollar for dollar. We're sixty-six percent of the way there, so just shy of ten million dollars in the fund and we have another four point fourteen million and asks that are out that we feel pretty confident about. So we're getting close. And then that type of structure is actually what enabled us to apply for that seven point three million dollar grant I talked about earlier from Department of Treasury. Because we needed somebody in the community that was willing to pay for the services upfront. We'll deliver those services and pay for them through the fund. Then we'll work again with the Boise State University to measure the impact of those for local, state and federal savings. And if we determine that we meet those local, federal and state savings, Department of Treasury will cut a check to the city of Boise, Our Path Home, who applied for the funding. And we'll reinvest that in the supportive housing investment fund. So these are a couple of strategic initiatives that are really looking at, if we have over two thousand people waiting for supportive housing, how do we continue to find ways to leverage local, federal and state funding to increase supply so we can truly end people's homelessness much more quickly? And ensure that that end of homelessness is permanent, so we don't have returns to homelessness. I think w- with that, that's, I think, probably more than enough or not enough, I don't know, information. Um, for you all. And the only other thing, normally when we come to cities, we really hope to provide some city-specific information. Really hard because in our data system, which is called Homelessness Management Information System, we pull everything by zip codes and you guys have two zip codes that we lovingly share with the city of Boise, so really hard to distinguish what's happening truly in Ada County. But a couple of things, eh, sorry, that scared me. Uh, a couple of things I'd say, just in conversation anecdotally with the librarians here, asked about, do you guys have folks housing instability or homelessness that access library? Answer yes. Has that been increasing over the last several years? Answer again, yes. Anecdotally, living in Garden City and we have two giant golden doodles, so we walk the green belt every day. Um, and I often bike to work using the green belt. My husband and I have noticed anecdotally an increase in the number of folks that are presenting as either housing insecure or experiencing homelessness that are in and around uh, Garden City over the last several years as well, a deep increase. And then our street outreach team, who's part of that crisis response, also has frequently, um, and probably with increased frequency, been sent on referrals to Garden City. Um, we used to collect data from our housing crisis hotline and you guys are the only city in the entire geography that put the housing crisis hotline on your website, so thank you so much for that. We received hundreds of calls from folks in Garden City that were seeking some support for uh, housing problem solving as they faced housing loss. We unfortunately no longer collect that data, um, due to some system issues, uh, but, but that's something that we're hoping to get back from or back to. So today, our goal was to provide an, an overview. Our hope is to be able to answer any questions you might have. And I think more importantly, we're hoping to figure out if there are additional ways that we can be of service or collaborate with Garden City. Um, when Mayor Evans and I were speaking, uh, one of his first anecdotes to me was like, well, Garden City, we don't have a Casey. And I was like, that's why I'm gonna correct you. I'm technically your Casey as well. So our goal really is to build these relationships across all of Ada County to ensure that our homelessness responses is as effective and collaborative as possible. So with that, I think Sadie and I open for questions or you guys can tell us to bug off for the day. And I'll say this is our first time ever being at a city council where it's just us and y'all, so it feels like a family meeting almost.
Are you staying for the budget public hearing?
Yeah, and we have thirty-four points to get through on your budget. No.
Well, thank, thank you for that, Casey. Uh, a lot of information to digest. Uh, uh, the, the slide deck is, can that be available? Cause I think, uh, a lot of information there and uh, if we can get that to the council and kind of ru- run back through it a little bit.
It is in the packet.
It's in the packet. Okay, so we're, we're, we're golden.
And if it's of help, I can follow up with those stats that I shared from our dashboard so that you also can have that information, because that's not included in the dashboard, in the presentation.
Okay, questions, counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
Um, wow, uh, thank you for the presentation. Um, if I asked all my questions, we'd be here all night, so I'll probably boil it down to a couple. One is I don't think many people realize just how much work it takes to manage homelessness, right? You've got people on the streets, you're doing this, and so I commend you for that because it's a lot of work. And I don't think, I personally didn't realize just how much work it took uh, to combat homelessness. Um, just a couple of questions. So you mentioned that there's like a three or four-year wait for somebody. So what do people do in the interim? Do they leave the area? Do, are there other things like the Boise Rescue Commission or its temporary? I was just curious what, what do they do while they're waiting?
Yeah, it, it depends on each household for what they do. And I'm gonna have Sadie answer this because she did, um, prior to her role, she worked on street outreach, so she'll be able to tell you a little bit about. Yeah, do you want to go first?
Yeah, thank you, Casey, and thank you for that question as well. Um, unfortunately, with that long wait period and limited resources in our community available, um, the support that different households receive depends on availability of services and also that prioritization, um, length of time experience of homelessness, severity of service need. So we have a variety of, um, I'll call them connectors under our connect committee, our crisis response. Uh, starting with our street outreach team, we have, uh, again, they're covering the geographical region of Ada County. So if an individual is on this queue, um, they are experiencing homelessness and they can connect with the street outreach, give them a call and say, hey, we need water, access to food and maybe some problem solving for like, how do we get this vehicle running? So the outreach team's job is to respond, build rapport, support this individual navigating that situation in hopes of mitigating that potential buildup of crisis. Um, if they were stranded out there, for example, or didn't have a support of water. Uh, Terry Riley provides other resources, these navigators that we call them, connecting individuals to resources that may help. Uh, it is unfortunate though, we know the solution is housing, um, so it, it really is putting Band-Aids on, on wounds.
Okay, I, just like, as they go through the seasons, right? I'm like, okay, what happens if, well, you know, I didn't know what they, what do they do? And then the, um, the second question I have is, um, one of your statements is you want to build an equitable partnership. What does that, wh- when you say equitable partnership, obviously you're looking for partnership, that was in your presentation, but what do, what do you mean by equitable partnership?
Yeah, um.
With whom?
Yes, equitable means that, um, as we're looking at the folks who require services, how are we determining with such a dearth of need, who comes first? And so one of the requirements and guidance that comes out from Housing and Urban Development for coordinated entry is to make sure that our process of assessment and prioritization considers a number of factors that increase in individuals' but, um, vulnerability. So when we're talking about an equitable response, it means to us is race, is gender, is nationality, sexuality. Are any of those a predeterminant of what outcome you will get when you interact with our system? They shouldn't be. If anything, anybody that comes into our system should be able to effectively, I, I'm sorry, keep it. Yeah, so, so to us, it really means, are we consistently looking at our data and ensure that as people are moving through our system, are we making sure that those factors don't become a determining factor in the outcome?
Okay, I just, when I, when I read equitable partnership, I was thinking of partnership with other organizations and so that so that makes sense.
Well, and that's a great, um, add-on, because I think in addition to that, one of the things that we're trying to do is work more with organizations that are led by and serving folks that are overrepresented in our community experiencing homelessness. So when you look at Ada County data and then you look at people experiencing homelessness, there are several groups that far outpace their percentage as it makes of total population and homelessness. So for that, often Hispanic and Latino households, um, indigenous households, black households, LGBTQ members are kind of some of those groups that we see that are overrepresented in data. And to ensure that we have culturally responsive resources, we are working to establish better connections with organizations that specifically deliver services that are culturally responsive to those communities.
Gotcha. You articulated that really well. So I'm impressed that Casey and Sadie, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. And then maybe like, uh, just to add on to what Sadie said about connections to services. Folks stay in shelter. Shelter doesn't have a timeout rate, so as long as they are, um, falling within program guideline, guidelines for whatever shelter that they're working with, they can stay there. Many households stay in RVs or cars. Other folks stay, um, in many areas, including B L M land. So it's really, really diverse, the experience of individuals as they're waiting for services.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you for that.
Thank you so much. It was very informative.
Great, thank you. Pleasure having you, Casey and Sadie.
Yep, absolutely. Thanks so much. And our, our hope is to find some way to follow up. So as we do this like tour to Ada County cities, um, we will circle back, I think, with the mayors to see if there is an opportunity to bring the cities in conversation together about what does it look like to collaborate government on government where our path home could facilitate or support, um, in that thing.
Great.
Perfect. Okay, thank you all so much. I really appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next item on our agenda, um, will be F four, Development Services Department Notice of Decisions. Any issues with that, with anybody? We'll move on then, uh, monthly staff reports. Uh, if there's any specific questions, I've got two to, three department heads here at the moment. Uh, again, those are, uh, in the packet and encourage you to contact the department heads if you have specific questions. If there's something we believe needs to be aired tonight, you can.
Mr. Mayor, I'll just say real quick, very quickly, that I appreciate the monthly reports. I know all our department heads are super busy. With just everything else that's on their plate and I just appreciate going through these, so I just wanted to say that.
Sure, they all appreciate that. Thank you. Okay, we'll go to, uh, items under G. Uh, these are public hearing items. First one, G one, this is Resolution eleven eighty-one. Amending the billing policy for the city of Garden City pursuant to Title Six. Again, this is on page fifty-seven in the packet. Lisa, just like in a couple of sentences, in case anyone's listening on, on, uh, remotely. What's the essence of this?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so in accordance with Idaho code, anytime we adjust fees more than five percent, uh, we did have to publish in the newspaper twice and then hold a public hearing. These are the fees that were increases that were built into the fiscal year twenty-five budget, uh, including an eight percent increase in water rates. And then the sewer rate was probably the most unique in that it was an aggregate of ten percent. And I went through each sewer code compared to Boise's. And one of the things that we've been working towards is to kind of redistribute the, the sewer charges so that those that are, are higher impact or a higher strength, if you will, on the sewer are paying a higher share. And that's the direction Boise has also been going. So there was a larger increase to some of our commercial customers, especially our higher producers. And a little bit lower, uh, increase to some of our residential customers. So we're trying to balance that out so that everybody's paying their, their fair share. Uh, and then trash services, we had about a four and a half in percent increase in trash. We get an annual three percent increase from the city of Boise and then any fees that are increased at the landfill are passed through to our residents.
Hey, thank you. Uh, with that said, uh, we have no one present here, so we won't have any in-person testimony. Anybody online? Hey, seeing none, uh, I will close the public hearing on Resolution eleven eighty-one dash twenty-four, uh, matters before the council.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to adopt Resolution number eleven eighty-one dash twenty-four.
Add a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing on the clerk call roll.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Rasmussen?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll move on to item G two. This is also a public hearing on Resolution eleven eighty-two dash twenty-four. Uh, this is a resolution, uh, to take the forgone property tax for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five. Uh, again, now this is detailed, uh, in the packet. Uh, we need to declare a reason we're taking uh, one percent forgone and that's, uh, to enhance our, uh, green belt maintenance. So I'll go, I'll open that public hearing on this item. Uh, again, no one is present to testify in person. Uh, anyone online? Want to testify? Okay, uh, with the record reflect, no one indicated an interest in testifying, therefore I'm closing the public hearing on Resolution eleven eighty-two dash twenty-four. Uh, what's the pleasure of the council?
Mr. Mayor? I move to, uh, approve Resolution eleven eighty-two. I move to, uh, approve Resolution eleven eighty-two dash twenty-four regarding the taking of forgone property taxes for the purposes of green building.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, clerk call roll.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Rasmussen?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, motion carries. Item G three, again, a public hearing on ordinance ten forty-nine dash twenty-four. Uh, this is our annual appropriations ordinance for twenty twenty-five budget in the sum of thirty million, seven hundred seventy thousand, five hundred thirty-eight dollars. Counsel, due to, uh, timing constraints, uh, this item uh, would need to be dealt with by suspending the normal three reading process and, uh, uh, suspending those rules, adopt and pub- publishing the ordinance immediately. So. Um, this is a public hearing item. I'll open the public hearing on our thirty million dollar budget, and there's no one here, uh, in person, uh, to testify, any testimony from those online. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing on ordinance ten forty-nine dash twenty-four. And then turn it to the council for action.
Okay, Mr. Mayor. I would move that we, uh, suspend the rules and adopt and publish ordinance ten forty-nine dash twenty-four, which is an ordinance to be termed the annual appropriation ordinance for the fiscal year beginning October first, twenty twenty-four, appropriating the sum of thirty million, seven hundred seventy thousand, five hundred thirty-eight to defray expenses and liabilities of the city of Garden City.
Mr. Mayor, just a point of order. We, we do need a first motion to have a, have a reading of the ordinance.
You're right. I know that. I should have known that.
My bad.
Hold that thought. No, it's not your fault. I'm sorry. I need a motion to, uh, read ordinance ten forty-nine dash twenty-four by title only. And, uh, then we'll do a second motion. You can repeat the motion.
Okay.
Okay, so first motion is to read by title only. My apologies.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we read ordinance ten forty-nine twenty-four regarding the city budget by title.
And second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, clerk call roll.
Councilmember Rasmussen?
Yes.
Councilmember Jorg- Jacobs?
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Ordinance ten forty-nine dash twenty-four, an ordinance to be termed the annual appropriation ordinance for the fiscal year beginning October one, twenty twenty-four, appropriating the sum of thirty million, seven hundred and seventy thousand, five hundred and thirty-eight dollars to defray the expenses and liabilities of the city of Garden City for said fiscal year, authorizing a levy of a sufficient tax upon the taxable property and spec- specifying the objects and purposes for which said appropriation is made, providing for conflict, conflicts and providing for an effective date.
Okay, Councilmember, uh, Councilmember Rasmussen.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, I move that, uh, and request to suspend the rules, adopt and publish ordinance ten forty-nine dash twenty-four. An ordinance to be termed the annual appropriations ordinance for the fiscal year beginning October first, twenty twenty-four, appropriating the sum of thirty million, seven hundred seventy thousand, five hundred thirty-eight to defray the expenses and liabilities of the city of Garden City.
All right, second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, clerk call roll.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Rasmussen?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Move to item G four. This is ordinance ten forty-six dash twenty-four. This is the code text amendments for the floodplain. We're on the, uh, this is on a, a third reading. If the council elects to proceed with the third reading, uh, then the next action in association with this would be to adopt and publish.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we move forward to the third reading of ordinance ten forty-six dash twenty-four regarding quote text amendments to the floodplain.
By title only.
By title only.
I'd second.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, clerk call roll.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Rasmussen?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Ordinance ten forty-six dash twenty-four, and ordinance of the city of Garden City, a municipal corporation of the state of Idaho, amending Garden City Code Title Eight Development Code Chapter Four Design and Development Regulations, Article H Flood Hazards Section Two Definitions, amending Garden City Code Title Eight Development Code Chapter Four Design and Development Regulations, Article H Flood Hazard Section Four Administration, amending Garden City Code Title Eight Development Code Chapter Four Design and Development Regulations, Article H Flood Hazard, Section Five Provisions for Flood Hazard Reduction, amending Garden City Code Title Eight Development Code, Chapter Four Design and Development Regulations, Article H Flood Hazard, Section Six Recarrian Zone, amending Garden City Code Title Eight Development Code Chapter Seven References, Article A Definition, Section Two Definition of Terms, repealing all ordinances or parts thereof to the extent that they conflict with this ordinance, providing all other ordinances, including the official code, are still in effect, notwithstanding some provisions thereof being eliminated, providing for severability clause, approving a summary of the ordinance and providing an effective date.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move to adopt ordinance ten forty-six dash twenty-four, adopt and publish.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, clerk call roll.
Councilmember Rasmussen?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move to item G five. Uh, this is CPA FY twenty twenty-four dash three. This is a, the code text amendment on extensions. Uh, we opened the public hearing on this item on August twelfth, uh, that has remained open. Uh, pending some potential, uh, additional discussion. As a result of the discussion we had, uh, on the twelfth, amendments, uh, and changes have been made. Those are in your packet. I think you've seen those. Uh, the public hearing's still open, so I want to give an opportunity to anyone online that may be interested in testifying regarding this, uh, item, to do so. Okay, uh, see no one online and no one is physically here. Am I safe to close the public hearing, Jenna? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing on CPA FY twenty twenty-four dash three.
Um, Mayor, uh, just a point of clarification, uh, prior to this meeting, walking in, um, city attorney Waddams had wanted that, to make sure that the council knew that, um, there's a section that says that the applications are vested once the subdivision is recorded or a CBO has been issued. And that was intentional to use that word versus complete. Um, and the reason for that is often, uh, with the subdivisions, we're seeing people work through the process, the restricted bill process. And so they would still be actively building their subdivision, but it would be in the construction phase. And so the legal pieces of property would be, um, recorded with the county at that point in time. And with that, I stand for any questions.
Any questions?
Mr. Mayor, can I just follow up on that?
Certainly.
Okay, and I, I thank you, Mayor, members of council, Ms. Thornborough. I did ask Ms. Thornborough earlier if she meant the word vested, um, and she said she did. I just wanted to bring that to the council's attention. I'm not sure if vested is the right word. She references it specifically on page ninety-four of your packet in her memo. She says the occurrence of any of the following events will cause an application approval to be vested and no further, no further extensions are necessary or extension is necessary. I wasn't, I, I just wanted to make sure. I'm not sure if vested is the right word. Uh, I just wanted to make sure the council is aware of that. Also on that memo, I, I wasn't sure if the word abote was the right word. And the only other comment I had from the legal side is that it's force measure, not forces measure. So, uh, that's a clerical issue that I think Jenna will fix. It's force measure, not forces measure. And those are my legal comments, but the word vested was my primarily, uh, what does that mean? Just wanted to make sure the council was aware of that. Thank you.
Um, I think the intent is, uh, council is to do a first reading tonight. And then, uh, if you choose to do that, and then the second reading, uh, any clerical errors or, uh, Charlie and Jenna can sort out vested. Vested.
Look at that, the thors.
The thors.
The thors.
It's, it's a word I've used for years, so I, I, but if there's a better word, then we'll talk about that. But I don't think there's anything that was discussed that would prevent the first reading tonight, if that's what you choose to do.
No, Mr. Mayor. No, Mr. Mayor, not from the legal side.
Okay.
And Mayor, one other point of, uh, clarification, um, prior to a first reading, uh, approval of the application would be requested by staff. The decision document, the approval. If we do it, or we could do it at the third, but in that the public hearing's being closed tonight if it's approved.
Okay, so, okay, so the decision document needs to be dealt with since we've closed the public hearing.
Yes, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
So it would be the first reading, uh, and adopting the decision document that accompanied this, it's in, also in the packet.
Looking for motion.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I move to, um, have the first reading of CPA FY twenty twenty-four dash zero 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 three and approve the decision document.
And the, can you include the ordinance number as well?
Oh, yeah, except for mine. Yes, sir. And, and do I move for the first reading of ordinance ten forty-five dash twenty-four?
Correct. I think you got it.
By title only. My favorite.
You're gonna forget sometime. We're gonna be here a long time. Okay, I've got a, uh, I've got a motion, uh, on the floor for the first reading of ordinance ten forty-five dash twenty-four, uh, which, uh, was the text amendment, CP A FY twenty twenty-four dash three and approval. Do you want two motions, Jenna, or one? Does it matter?
I, I think technically the best practice would be two separate motions.
Okay, so let's do the first reading. So I've got a motion for the, uh, first reading, uh, on the floor right now.
Second.
Okay, you got a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, clerk call roll.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Rasmussen?
Yes.
First reading, ordinance ten forty-five dash twenty-four, and ordinance of the city of Garden City, a municipal corporation of the state of Idaho, amending Garden City Code Title Eight Development Code Chapter Six Administration, Article A General Provisions, Section Eight Expiration of Approvals, amending Garden City Code Title Eight Development Code, Chapter Seven References, Article A Definition, Section Two Definition of Terms, repealing all ordinances or parts thereof to the extent they conflict with this ordinance, providing all other ordinances included in the official code are still in effect, notwithstanding some provisions thereof being eliminated, providing for sever- severability clause and providing a summary of the ordinance and providing an effective date.
Hey, thank you. Um, then I'm looking for a motion to approve the decision document for ordinance ten forty-five dash twenty-four.
I so move.
We've got a motion to have a second.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, clerk call roll.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Rasmussen?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Next item, item G six is ordinance ten forty-two dash twenty-four. This is, uh, the long awaited, hopefully, end of the uh, green belt ordinance that the cities along the green belt and the county are mutually adopting, so we have common rules, uh, that pertain to the green belt as it relates to traffic. Wheeled traffic, I guess. Charlie, do you need to chime in on this for a minute?
If I could just briefly, so, uh, Mayor and Council, uh, my, my memorandum starts on page one thirteen of the packet. Also, I'm starting on page one forty-three of the packet is Chief Stanba's PowerPoint. So, uh, Chief Stanba, I think, had this idea, idea a, a couple of years ago that it would probably benefit everybody involved if there was a consistent rule of law up and down the green belt. So that was the idea, uh, the local police agencies and the local legal advisors of those agencies have been working on this. So Chief Stanba's, um, PowerPoint's on page one forty-three. My legal memorandum starts on one thirteen. Um, I can report some things that are not in the memo, uh, such as, uh, currently on this MOU that was currently in front of the council on January eighth. That's where all the, the agencies could work together, um, and, you know, Garden City Police could go into Boise and Boise Police could go into Garden City if it's only on the green belt, you know, to enforce a, a single set of rules on the green belt. Um, Eagle Star and Garden City have signed that MOU, uh, Ada County and the city of Boise are working on that. Um, I wanted to report that I got an email on August thirteenth from the Boise City Attorney's Office. On August thirteenth, Boise had a work session on the green belt safety, and their city council gave direction to proceed with the MOU. I think the county commissioners have given similar instructions for their staff to proceed. So it looks like all the agencies in Ada County are proceeding with this, uh, one rule basically for the green belt. So a couple of things that this ordinance accomplishes, uh, try to bundle up a couple of things. One is, uh, the recommendation is to update Title Five, uh, to talk about e-bikes and e-scooters. Our code currently doesn't even have the definitions of e-bikes and e-scooters, uh, when our code was written in the eighties or whatever. On that title, uh, there was no such a thing. So we're updating, uh, the definitions. That would be Title Five, or at least that's the recommendation. Uh, and then in Title Ten is actually about the green belt. Couple of things about the green belt is it is part of the Garden City park system. And so Title Ten is for our parks, and so, uh, this would apply, um, generally to our parks and specifically to the green belt. Um, there are a couple of things in my memo, started, um, on, on page one sixteen. I referenced that our penalty for infractions is outdated. Uh, currently it says an infraction, this, these type of infractions is punishable by seventy-four dollars plus court costs. The recommendation is to increase that consistent with the Idaho code. Uh, I'm gonna fact check this between now and the next me- meeting, but I think the Idaho, Idaho code says now infractions can be up to three hundred dollars plus court costs. Ours currently reads seventy-four plus court costs, so might as well make ours consistent with the Idaho code and, and hopefully bring some fines and forfeitures in along that regard. The actual ordinance starts on page one eighteen. Uh, there are a couple of things that I wanted to make a record of right now. I have just recently talked to the police department and Chief Stanba in particular. And there's a couple of things that, uh, the police department would like to be taken out of this, and so I want to bring that up. One thing on page one twenty-six that the police department is recommending we take out is the licensing of, uh, but not only bicycles, but e-bikes and e-scooters. Um, that's section five dash nine dash twenty. I think this, for the second reading, if we get that far, staff's gonna take that provision out if the council would like us to. Um, Boise licenses bicycles, e-bikes and e-scooters, but the Garden City Police Department does not, I don't think. And so I don't think we want to be in the business of licensing e-bikes and e-scooters. So the recommendation would be to take out that provision. Uh, and there's, uh, and then the other provision that the recommendation is to take out is regarding labeling, um, and tampering and, and something else that's just not applicable. So there'll be a little bit of a cleanup between tonight and, and the next meeting. Uh, the recommendation is that the council pass this. There are a couple of policy questions that I would have, uh, such as in Boise, if somebody were to get a ticket for, uh, a, a violation on e-bikes or e-scooters, they have an administrative process with the city where they could take it to city staff and see if, you know, if they, if they will dismiss the ticket. My recommendation is we don't go through that administrative process. If, if somebody wants to fight their ticket on their e-bike or their e-scooter or their bicycle, it just gets, you know, it's a Idaho uniform citation. It goes right to court. There's no administrative process. Uh, so that's my recommendation on that. Regarding the actual, uh, law on the green belt, uh, that is in the packet as well. Um, we're adding a definition of green belt that we took from Title Eight, um, Development Code. We added a definition of green belt, and so we're concluding that definition for these purposes as well. Uh, and then the, the, the million dollar issue is on page one thirty-four of your packet. It changes, it repeals a speed limit on the green belt currently right now. Anywhere in our park system, there's a speed limit of fifteen miles per hour. This would be repealing a speed limit, um, on the green belt. And one of the questions is, do you want to repeal it for all of the parks as well, uh, or just the green belt? So that's a policy question. Uh, my recommendation probably would be to repeal it, uh, for all the parks and that this rule here applies to the green belt and all the park system. The proposal is that every- that everybody on any vehicle, and again, this is a policy question. Do you want it to apply to all vehicles or only certain vehicles? When I say vehicle, I'm talking about motorized vehicles and un-motorized vehicles. E-scooters and e-bikes are not motorized vehicles. Under the federal, federal safe motor vehicle safety standards, they are not motor vehicles. That's why you currently cannot get a DUI, for example, on a e-scooter or a bicycle because they're not motor vehicles. So what's the scope for the green belt? My recommendation is the scope should be for all vehicles. That includes skateboards, that includes one-wheels, that includes bicycles, e-bikes, e-scooters, everything. And that recommendation is that everybody on a vehicle on our green belt, and I'm recommending on our parks as well, they must travel at a speed great, they cannot travel at a speed greater than or manner that is not reasonable and prudent under the conditions and having regard to the actual and potential hazards that exist. Violation of this provision is an infraction. However, if such travel endangers or is likely to endanger any person or property, that bumps it up to a misdemeanor. This is the wording that all the agencies involved have agreed on. I think it's good wording. I helped to wordsmith that. That's copied in large part from the Idaho code, so I think this is wording that the agencies can prosecute successfully. Jen Bennett's, the Ada County Prosecutor, her office has looked at wording. She agrees that this is wording that her office could prosecute successfully. And so the recommendation is to pass ultimately this ordinance, and tonight the recommendation is to go through one reading by title only. So I stand for any questions. Thank you.
Any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Waddams, just one question on so there's no speed limit? Because you said, but whether, so is it purely a visual, subjective? That person's reckless and I could prosecute them because I think they're reckless versus they're going too fast? I mean, and there's no definition of too fast?
Okay.
That ambiguous for me. Just clarification.
Sure. Mayor, Mayor and Council, that's a very good question. I see Chief Stanbach coming up. He can answer that question on the front end of it, and maybe I can answer the question on the back.
Yeah, I think what how a police officer deals with that.
Right. I'm just curious. It seems so.
Yeah, we don't want to have radar guns. None of us do, trying to measure speed, you know. So how would that be dealt with in the field, Chief?
Just kind of like reckless driving, based on observations and with their conduct causing people to be at risk, or if they crash. And if they crash into someone, or if a pedestrian walks out in front of a bicycle surprises a crash.
Okay. And does this only apply to bicycles and things like that? I mean, with, you know, if people are reckless with pets, for instance, this ordinance wouldn't apply to that.
So that's one of the mayor, council, chief Stanba, that's one of the policy questions really is what's the scope of this? The way it's written is it covers vehicles. It doesn't cover animals. It doesn't cover pedestrians. It covers vehicle specific. I suppose an Olympian could run thirty miles an hour and knock somebody over, but I don't think there's a lot.
I just had a friend who ended up in the river unconscious because a dog ran in front of his bike, so I didn't know, but that might be a separate ordinance.
Well, and those, Mayor and Council, those are great policy questions for the, for the city council. You know, do you want an administrative process? The recommendation is no. Do you want, do you want a misdemeanor component? And a misdemeanor component would be like Chief Stanba said, if they cause a wreck and they hurt somebody, they hurt some property, that's a misdemeanor. Why do I think that's important? Because then the government, the prosecution can ask for restitution for people's medical bills, and they don't have to sue civilly. If it's just an infraction, it would be an officer observing, you know, somebody had to swerve off the green belt to get out of the way or something. That would probably get in practice.
Obviously going too fast.
And that wording, again, Mayor, Councilmember Jacobs, that wording is taken from Idaho code that's been tried and tested and and it's withheld in a constitutional attempt.
Well, thank you for the clarification.
Yeah. I'd be cautious about expanding the scope beyond vehicles as as Charlie's mentioned. If we need to do something with other areas, I don't, I don't want to throw a monkey wrench in what everybody's kind of agreed to.
Well, there might be a code already for people who come out of the cuts.
Yeah, Mr. Yeah, yeah.
The big, one of the big pieces of this is, we hoped to do this spring two years ago. We've got lawyers involved. Because a lot of it's going to be P S A S and education.
Right.
So here's the law, but also from our observations and that's in the PowerPoint. If you and I are walking down the green belt and stop and talk, get off the green belt. Or if you're coming up from a side like Duck Lake or those to the main green belt, you have to stop when I'm actually on, we're talking about put stops there. It's not kind of like traffic. If I'm going straight this way, and I come up, this person has to stop and make sure. So a lot of that will be education with all the different agencies.
I think it's great.
And if I have one more thing I may, there's a thing called Bike Index that we use. It's Boise's bike registration, but a lot of the cities and counties use it. And so that's when you buy a bike, you're encouraged to go on there before it's stolen. Register all the information, take pictures, and that way if it is stolen, then we have, you have all the information to report to us, and then we check that as well. We have, we have access to that.
So Bike Index?
Yes, sir.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I think before, if there's a motion for a first reading, if staff could get any guidance on whether this new rule should apply to only the green belt or all of our parks? And whether you'd like an administrative process or just to get routed right to the traffic court? That'd be great.
As administratively, I'd like to follow your, Charlie's recommendations. Number one, our park system, other than the green belt, no place you could ride a bike very fast.
I think it makes sense to make it system-wide.
And then no internal administrative process. We just start staff to do that.
And so I will take that out. I mean, if that's the guy.
Yeah, I agree.
What's, I think there was, you wanted feedback from the council on approving the escalation to to a misdemeanor.
Yes, the way it's written is an escalation, but yes, that'd be great if the council's agreeable with that.
I'm in favor of that.
As am I.
Okay.
And I think also you were asking if there were any, if there was input on repealing the fifteen miles an hour to apply to all versus to include e-bikes and e-scooters, correct?
Yes, Councilmember Jorgensen.
And I would also agree with that.
Think you're getting everything you asked?
I'm getting, yep. It sounds, all sounds great.
Okay.
And I think the last one I captured, you were asking for feedback on the increase to be in alignment with Idaho code to, for the fine to be three hundred dollars from seventy-four, which I'm also strongly in favor of.
Okay. Mayor Council, I can make that happen.
Okay, I think we're at a point now where we can entertain a first reading for ten, ordinance ten forty-two dash twenty-four by title only.
I so moved. Make it easy.
We got a motion and a second. By Councilmember Jacobs, read ordinance ten forty-two dash twenty-four by title only.
Councilmember Rasmussen?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Ordinance ten forty-two dash twenty-four, and ordinance of the city of Garden City, a municipal corporation of the state of Idaho, amending Garden City Code Title Five Traffic to include Chapter Nine Bicycles, E-Bikes and E-Scooters, Section One Definitions, Section Two Traffic Laws apply to persons riding bicycles, e-bikes and e-scooters. Section Three Required Equipment, Section Four Riding on Bicycles, E-Bikes or E-Scooters, Section Five clinging to motor vehicles, Section Six Riding on roadways, Section Seven Using provided bike lanes and bike paths, Section Eight Riding upon sidewalks and upon and within crosswalks, Section Nine Passing Other Vehicles, Section Ten Dispense Not Required When Stopping, Section Eleven Turn Signals, Section Twelve Riding in Groups, Section Thirteen Bicycle, E-Bike or E-Scooter Parking, Section Fourteen Use of Bike Paths and Bike Lanes by Other Non-Motorized Modes of Transportation, Section Fifteen Group Events, Section Sixteen Unlawful Use of Bike Lanes and Bike Paths, Section Seventeen Reckless or Inattentive Operations, Section Eighteen Defacing Public or Private Property, Section Nineteen Basic Rule and Maximum Posted Speed Limits, Section Twenty Bicycle, E-Bike and E-Scooter Licenses, Section Twenty-One Notice of Violations and Procedures, Section Twenty-Two Penalties, Section Twenty-Three Labeling Requirements, Section Twenty-Four Tampering Restrictions, Section Twenty-Five CPSC Compliance, Section Twenty-Six Removal of Abandon and Obstructed Bicycles, E-Bikes, E-Scooters, or any part thereof from public places, and amending Title Ten Public Parks, Chapter One Parks and Waterways Rules and Regulations, Section One Definitions, Section Two Prohibited Acts Related to Park Properties, Section Three Traffic, Section Four Recreational Activities, Section Five Behavior, and amending the language to include provisions for e-bikes and e-scooters, amending language to clarify prohibited acts and penalties, providing severability, repealing conflicting code provisions, approving a summary of the ordinance, and providing an effective date.
Six breaths, I count.
Yeah, that's some of these, it reminds me of the disclaimers after certain commercials. So I'm convinced they record and then speed up. Okay, thank you. We, next item on our agenda is going to be to move into executive session. As outlined on the agenda, entertain a motion to do that.
Mr. Mayor, move that in accordance with Idaho Code seventy-four dash two oh six one F to communicate with legal counsel for the public agency to discuss legal ramifications of and legal options for pending litigation or controversies. So I move that we move into executive session.
Hey, you got a motion? Need a second?
What order do we need to state that we will reconvene?
Okay.
Oh, we got to reconvene.
Okay. Or controversies not being litigated, but imminently likely, likely to be litigated, after which the regular city council meeting will reconvene for potential action.
Got a motion, second by Councilmember Jacobs? Okay. Clerk call roll.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hey, thank you. We are in executive session.